Investigator and he's, what he has is he has access to some databases that normal people cannot get access to. And he's actually developed a software program that does cross referencing of databases based on the database we provide them. And it starts to tell you as to where people say they live and it starts matching up names and addresses and it goes through a verification process. And it goes through, it gives you a list, a first list of no matches. And then what he does is he requires for us to give dates of birth for parents that he can narrow down those matches because there are things that are common that don't match. Common names and things of that nature. Smith, Jones, non-communities.
So you wanted to date the birth of a parent?
Yes, if we can get it off of certain records that we have, that he'll be able to then verify more finite. What he has found is that first time through, he gets about a 1% no match. And then from there after the no matches, sometimes he gets almost as high as half a percent for us, which would be about 30 students. He's saying that's what he's finding as the norm. He also does, if you need to, he can do an extensive search into other classifications. If there are some instances where you feel you have a higher rate of people trying to come into your community, he can narrow in on those also, do some more finite work. The proposal that when you spoke to him, Mr. Mackinon, of $2 per, was if you did over 5,000 students. If the number's under 5,000, it's a higher rate. Obviously, the bigger the database, the easier it runs and things of that nature. Unfortunately, I was, I'm waiting on his proposal so I can bring it back to the board. But it's roughly about $2 if you do 5,000. If his numbers and what his findings are, if we find 30 students and out of those 30, I mean, is there a direct $10,000 savings for every student? I can't say that, but at least.
It is not, but it does reduce class.
It does reduce your class size and it may help into other areas where you may have some, some situations that you want to look at and he can help.
When he says he narrows it down to 30, let's say, a half a percent or whatever, of that 30, how many are valid, illegal?
That's what he said. When he's done, he, his findings have been that it's almost a half a percent of your population.
Of 30 students?
Of 6,000 students.
That, that's more than I would imagine.
And I, I was surprised at those numbers also, but he said that's what his, his findings have been doing this in the state of New Jersey. Obviously, when you're close, when you're in other districts that may border some urban communities, avid district, your rates are probably higher. I'm not sure how much of that would influence here, but.
I think, I think the biggest impact is on full day kindergarten. And I would, I would venture to say that you would find 10, 15 without a doubt. And then you have the collateral damage aspect of it because once the word is out that residency checks are being done, people get caught, then you're going to see numbers reduced. And this is real simple internally. If I did a study of who's in kindergarten right now versus who comes back to first grade in September, I bet you those numbers don't match. And that to me, and I'm not even one of these private detectives, can tell you that, that's an issue.
I don't know.
Well, let me ask your question because I know this has always been a concern here. If he finds a student and he says they don't match, and that student has on record this domicile agreement, this affidavit, like how does that work? Which seems to be where the problem's always been here.
At that point in time, once he identifies the 30, he turns it over to the school district and then it becomes upon us to do the pay, legwork at that point if we wish, to then do all the true verification process. He may come up with a match and Ms. Zeichner might have in her office some letter that indicates the child is domiciled via some, some other means other than the direct match. You also have issues where parents are separated or divorced. So the father may be domiciled in another district, but the mother is the one that stayed and has the children here. And the father, through the records, took all the mail and had it delivered to him and the mother's not receiving any mail. You know, he gave me some of those instances that he found that are inconsistencies that you then have to manually check. So there is adding a 30, you start verifying those. That's an added service if you wish for him to do it. We have a truancy officer or our investigator that can go out and then start verifying those kinds of things if you move in that, that direction.
I think it's worth it that we investigated further, let him give us the proposal. And I think even if we spent $10,000 on this, I think that's money well invested.
I agree.
I don't think it's a big investment to find out where your true residency issues are, if you have them.
But we do send out now residency checks. How many of those do we send out a year?
I just started this job, so I'm not sure how many we've done in the past, but I mean, I know, we keep him pretty busy. I mean, he's out there checking, the schools call him.
We're not doing 1,000.
No, but didn't, I remember we had this issue in the summer. I remember calling you because I got actually complaints from parents that they had to come in and prove they were residents, their kids were seniors in high school. Like, how do we do that?
Phyllis, I can tell you being closer to it than Marilyn, normally, believe it or not, the way we find out of most of our residency issues is through transportation. That's how we find out.
I'm also looking for our general process. I know we sent, I know there were people that.
Most of it is based on someone coming forward saying they know, they see a car with New York license plates dropping off kids at a bus stop.
Well, I know people who got those letters in the summer. I know teachers that work at this school that got them and they live here. Like, how were they chosen? How did that work? Was it a random thing? I mean, I can't imagine those people were, I have a neighbor down the street, this was her fourth child in the district that got a letter, so.
That is not random over the summer. Basically, they go through the records and everyone is supposed to have all this paperwork.
Oh, so it's paperwork.
It might have been paperwork.
And when they were going through files and they realized that they didn't have the paperwork.
So do they check those records every year? Every record is checked every year for paperwork?
Theoretically, yes. Okay. But you know, but we get, we get information, we get anonymous phone calls. We get all.
I can tell you the biggest one is that we hear is someone will say, we saw a car pull up at the bus stop with New York license plates.
But we do do something. It's not as long as we don't do anything.
No, once we get that information, we then turn, turn it over to the investigator and he does.
I know some districts offer rewards that if you identify someone that turns out to be.
If you look in this brochure, that indicates it. You could put up posters, there's like private tech lines that you can go through.
It's just my feeling that as, as board members, this is something that we ought to do and think we're responsible to do it. And if there's not a direct money savings, because now the class has 22 versus 24, yeah, you're not going to save $20,000, but you freed a class of two kindergarten students. And I think once that word gets out, I think, I think that's our responsibility to, you know, we talk about, you know, spending 60, 80,000 dollars to fix a baseball field. I think spending $10,000 to determine who's coming to our school that should be paying tuition is a no brainer.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, you, depending on how these kids are here, you might be able to get tuition reimbursement for the district they were wanting.
Yeah, and we've been victims of that, if I recall, in the past, where districts have hit us up. I, I think this solves a lot of our budget problems, I think.
And Marilyn, how, do you know like how many students say this year or do you have any idea, you know, are there any?
Oh, there are definitely some. I mean, I know I was involved in a case at one of the elementary schools where we got word that there were three children in school, three children, that mom, they were living with mom in Old Bridge and dad was maybe living here in Sarvo, we weren't real sure. And repeatedly, we sent down Mr. Marsinsic to check on things and to go. And they finally left like last week. So, you know, that was three students in one, one family? One family, yes. And then I have another one.
Normally you'll find it's more than one, I know.
Yes.
They're remote family.
Yeah, there have been numerous ones. I'd say that I've been, a lot of them don't even come directly to me. The schools just called him up. I got a phone call from another elementary school today that they have two kids that they understand are not living where they claim they are. So they were, they were calling Mr. Marsinsic themselves today and they said they'd keep me informed. So now we do.
So we seem to be on top of it?
I, I think so. I mean, we.
But strictly based on tests.
Yes.
Do you feel that we need this service if we're on top of it? Can you recommend it?
I, I.
I mean, what do you feel? Do we really need it if we're on top of it?
Honestly, like I said, I've only been doing this job for about two months, so I'm really, I don't think it hurts. I mean, I think depending on the cost, it's worth a try. Certainly, the more avenues we pursue, you know.
Right, and I like Mike's idea, thinking about the kind, especially the kindergarten, but the elementary school. And so we'll find out what kind of price he comes back at.
Well, I can say, you generally said if it's over 5,000, it's $2 per student or per name.
Only 1,000.
Right, right now, a book of knowledge tells us there's 5,977 students registered.
I believe we're up to 9,000, well, the October 15 count, that's 5,994.
Okay.
So around 6,000.
6,000.
We're not 6,000.
Yeah, one half a percent, that's a lot of kids.
Mike, you brought it back for me.
Mike, you brought this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So you'll read out prices at the next meeting, I take it?
Well, I was hopeful to have him for tonight, I just didn't receive him. It was, it was interesting to understand his process because he really got it. He's actually a licensed private investigator that saw an avenue to make an extra living.
Hey, if he finds 30 kids, I recommend.
I just want to make sure it's. We'll see how much it costs.
Thank you for your, your diligence, sir.
Okay. Indian cultural event, Dr. Althaus.
I'm hoping this is relatively easy. Phyllis and I, Phyllis and I were discussing this.
I don't think so.
This is one of the lot, this is one of the largest, largest events that anybody's asked us to do. It's between 800 and 1,000 that are going to come into the high school. And they pretty much want to have, well, they pretty much want to use every nerve and cranny of the high school. I asked Jim, you know, whether or not he had a little bit of a reservation. He did. I'm, you know, I'm a little concerned about it because of the amount of people, parking, everything. I mean, it's, it is, it will get kind of crazy there. It's not until June, but I'm looking for some direction. Phyllis and I talked about possibly if we allow this, which I have a tendency to agree to, because they are very good in the sense that if they break something, they fix it. I mean, I mean, and they, and they're, you know, they do their thing and they leave. I mean, that they don't, they don't destroy the place. But when you have that many bodies, you know, my concern is, is that of the facilities, this is a brand new facility. You have the auditorium, you have the gymnasium, you have the cafeteria. My assumption is they're going to use all those areas. And I think we, we should possibly think about that they bring in security or a police officer. They, they pay for custodians, they don't, they're good like that. It's not about, they have all the proper insurance. It's not like they walk in here and don't have the insurance. I'm just looking for direction.
How much is the facility fees that we would have?
Joe, Joe was out, but the facility fees are substantial. I mean, I could get you that number, but they pay, they pay quite a bit of money to use the facility.
And they've used it before, this group, not new number, right?
But they're a bit of a problem. I mean, I'm not saying they're a problem. It's just, it's a bigger, it's a bigger affair. It's, it's, it's a Saturday, it's at the, I believe it's like the, it's after school zone, it's like the 23rd.
I don't have a policy in front of us, but could we mandate that they have a higher level of police officers?
Well, we don't, we don't have to approve, we can just say that they have it.
Well, I think his concern here was actually the auditorium. We just spent a lot of money to fix it. If they came in here and they broke a table, you, you could make them pay and, and replace it. The auditorium, I think, would be a little bit more difficult if they ruined, if they ruined the carpeting. What do you do? Do you rip up the whole place and ask them to put in new carpeting? I have a bigger concern with the auditorium.
We could make that off limits. I mean, we could say to them, look, you could use the facility, but you can't use the auditorium.
But then we have to have that consistently from anybody who wants to use the auditorium. That's my concern. And we've talked about this many years in the past.
Right.
That we care for everybody. If the auditorium is off for these events, it's off everybody and not just certain groups because we're concerned. Yeah, that's my concern.
I don't, I don't think anybody really uses the auditorium to begin with. It's rare that anybody has.
I think they set for awards.
Yes, they want, look, they use it for all the right reasons. They're not, they go to the cafeteria because they're going to eat, they go to the auditorium because they want to get awards. You know, I mean, you know, I don't know if they're playing basketball in a gym, but they use it.
A lot of our students are involved in this as well.
Right. This is a big community event.
And is it, is it mostly Sarvo residents or?
I, I don't, honestly, I think so, but I don't know the actual configuration. I don't know. I, I don't have the actual breakdown now. They'll say, they'll say yes, and I, I have a tendency to agree that it is many of, the percentage is large. You know, I would say like, you know, I always, they say 90, 80, 90%. I would agree to that. I think it's a lot of our people. But, you know, every time we, you know, if I ask them for information, they know what we're looking for and it gives the documentation. And I'm not going to sit there, you know, take attendance. I think that the safest thing to do is to require security and put somebody, buddy auditorium. And, and if you decide, you know, you want somebody, you know, to, you know, police the areas like outside, you want somebody because of traffic, I mean, traffic's going to be.
Yeah, we're going to have 600 to 800 people, we are going to have parking and.
You set it to 1,000, right?
I don't know exactly how many. Six to 800, maybe more, I don't know. I don't know how big these things get.
That's the number we set for Odyssey of Mind.
Yeah. Well, the Odyssey of Mind is, it is policed. The Odyssey of Mind is security, is police, it's.
Did we, did we make that as part of stipulation or agreement?
You want to use our own or you want, you know, I don't know if we can mandate that we use outside police.
I think the opportunity for our own internal people, like I agree with Laurie, to, to give them a little time. You know, we have security guards that they're familiar with the building, know what to look for. I don't think, I don't think a police officer is going to say, don't stay in the carpet. Where our own security house was, hey, you don't.
Right, I think you need the police more for the outside.
Right.
Isn't that food being brought in to like the auditorium? You're not allowed to bring food into the auditorium.
No, no, no.
No, but they were going to use food in the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, they're going to use it.
So there'll be no food in the auditorium at all?
Will they cook?
And that's why I said food.
No, I don't think they turn the ovens on. If they, they turn the ovens on, they have to have a cafeteria person there, which I don't, I don't think they do. I think they bring their own food in. Was that right? They bring their own food in, right?
Yeah, they've never, they've never used the kitchen UES.
They don't use the kitchen, they bring their food in.
Have they, they been to the UES?
Yes, yes.
And how do they leave like the facility when they're done Odyssey?
Honestly, we, we haven't had major problems. And any problem that we did have was minor and repaired, but then, you know.
And they paid for it too. They've never, they've never disputed the bill that we set.
Did you have a group of this size, a thousand people in your school?
No, the, the UES couldn't handle it with that size.
My concern is the volume of people that, that it's more potential for something to go wrong when you rent it to 100 people.
And they still understand the no open flame.
Oh, are these the same people from the candle?
I don't. I mix them up. There's about three or four organizations.
No, but this is for a friend with.
This is their celebration. This is their 25th celebration. I don't know what that means, but.
About 25 years.
25 years.
Their existence, I just, as an organization.
Dr. Brashana?
I'll be very honest with you, my answer is no, very simply, because this is a facility that was constructed for the education of the students of Sarvo. It's not an entertainment facility. It's as simple as that.
But it's a public building and that's where you have to watch it. You have disabled residents. Tom, I understand what you're saying, you know, that is a problem.
The issue here, Mike, is that, you know, it's not an entertainment facility.
I understand.
Okay, we don't, we don't, I don't see any other groups coming to use the facility.
Huge groups, I mean?
Anybody, anybody, okay? If you want, they have a place and home though, the art center, all right? Check with the Sarvo senior citizens and see what they'll say.
It's a public building and, you know, and we have policies that say you can rent it out.
My point is, my answer is no, and that's.
You have to, Mike, I get a vote too.
What, what, what do you guys want to do?
We have a policy that says we have to rent.
No, we have a policy that says our facility is available to rent and these are the rates that we charge. And we've been down this road before about being selective on who we allow to use the building. Now, if we have a policy that says you're limited to the number of people you have in the building, then I'm all for that, but we don't have that. And I'm just concerned that you go down this road and they say, hey, you're not allowed to use the facility.
But did we ever have anyone of 1,000 people ask us before?
There should be a limit. Can there be a limit?
We've had, I think, several years ago.
Yeah, 600.
Several years ago, they made use, I'm not sure if it was this building or the middle school, there was another big anniversary.
This is a public meeting and we just discussed that we have Odyssey of Mind and we said we have 800, 1,000 people here. So obviously the Phyllis, the city, they accommodate that many people. So now we're saying we got 1,000 people, that's too many. I'd say you got to be careful, that's all I'm saying.
Right. I agree, Mike, and I also, I'll go back to Kevin and Phyllis, I mean Kevin and Helen. This isn't until June. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Okay, but I'd like to hear what the people here have to say.
No, no, that's, yeah, me too. Well, we have time, it's not like we.
I don't, we don't make a decision tonight, but I, I think the people here could have an opinion with two people missing.
You don't, you don't, you don't know these groups, they're already, you know, they want to know.
They want to know.
They want a plan, they want, and I don't blame them. I mean, this is a big celebration for that.
And to compare, I mean, I've been to Odyssey of the Mind events, I've judged at Odyssey of the Mind. You're talking major security at these events, major people everywhere policing them, there's teachers everywhere, it's, it's their own home. It's a different environment than 1,000 people coming every day. And that's definitely an educational opportunity. I don't know that I want to compare this to Odyssey of the Mind.
I think that the key is, Phyllis, on what you're saying, you may want to say that you, you require some type of security and it be not of, of their own individuals so that you have some, some type of an outside group monitoring and overseeing that may have a better interest as our own security people. And you might have teachers that might be willing to do it, custodians, maintenance, and to enforce that they use our employees as the security so that there's a sense of level of somebody watching the building that understands the building and knows the building. I, I can tell you, the toughest thing that you're going to have is you have food in this building, it's controlling people going into the auditorium with food. And if it's at least people employed by the district, you stand probably a better chance of saying you're not allowed in here than if they're self-monitoring where they might not be as strict with it. I'm okay.
I would say yes, but I would limit the amount of people, like a definite limit, like no more than 500.
I don't know if you can do that. As Mike said, I don't know if your policy and you can say that at this point in time when you have a building.
What I'll do to make this.
Are you like asking them to, what, they want to use the bottom floor?
What I'm going to do is I'm going to talk to Joe tomorrow, hospital, going to get more information. I'm going to tell them no matter what, they're going to have to have a minimum of two security people, no matter what. If they're unwilling to obviously pay for the security, then they're going.
Then they can't do it.
Then I.
Since we have three security guards, I think we should go with the whole three out of the house.
Well, let's see how many people, let's see how many people are coming. I want to find out definitively how many people you're putting on the application and what specific rooms. Right now, they said they use an older room. Sometimes they put everything down and they don't use it. I want to know. They may never use the auditorium. They may say, you know what, we don't want the auditorium if it's going to be a hassle.
Oh, and then we could just lock it?
Then we just lock it up. And that's what I'm going to say to them. Say, look, our biggest.
Biggest concern is.
Uh, by?
We have the gates to segregate the building.
Right, and we can segregate off the building. So if they start to say to me, no, we don't, you know, we, you know, auditorium is our biggest issue. We don't want people in there because it's hard to control, people are going to have food. Best thing to do is don't use the auditorium, we won't charge you for that. You have, this is a big enough cafeteria area where you can, you know, do your thing here. So let's see what they have to say. I will send you out an email probably before Thanksgiving, when we come back for the December meeting, they'll have all the information. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a quick decision and be done with it. Because we're going back and forth, back and forth, and we don't really have all the information. And as Ed knows, they may not use all the, all the facility. They, they open it up and they say, well, I might do this, no, no. Or, let's find out exactly. And how many people?
I mean, are we allowed to set any limits or?
We, we, we could put things off limits, but at the same time, if they're willing to pay for it and they want it, it's kind of hard to stop them. But we could, yeah, in answer to your question, we could.
And I'd still like to know, like, or is it, is it mostly Sarvo residents?
Well, I can ask that question and I'm going to tell you the answer. Yes. I mean, I don't.
But I'm either going to put that in writing?
Yeah, they usually do. I mean, but I have no way of tracking.
I have to trust that they're being honest.
I have no way of tracking.
And you definitely need to know how many people.
Yeah, I know that. And I want to know what exact rooms are they using and tell them that security, say for every 250, every 300 people, you're going to need a security guard.
But we also need outside security, we're going to use some sort of traffic.
Well, let me find out, let me, let me find out.
They should pay for police also, I mean.
Well, I can only say to them, look, this is what the board's looking to do. I don't want to be too prohibitive because we don't do that with other groups.
But we've never had a group of this.
You said Odyssey of the Mind is bringing in their own security?
They have a lot of their own security because you have advisors and things of this nature. You already have built-in security.
Right.
The kids, it's only like 10 kids with each advisor.
They're not doing track.
They're not doing track, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you got a lot of bosses and stuff, okay. So, okay.
Okay, anything else? Dr. Althaus, there was a question, is everybody done with the thing that we were talking? The, still over. We had discussed the preschool is still over and I know I had a conversation with a video about it as there have been resolutions on what we're doing with preschool and about the static, the current preschool. And how about like the status of the building and the future?
Right, what about? This thing.
The current, what about the future? Because we discussed.
We're staying in bending what we get back from the demographic report. We're going to wait for the demographic report to give us a snapshot and their belief as to where growth is and, and things of that nature before we do anything else at this point in time.
Okay, but my concern was that our enrollment issue is zero and losing, are we looking for the future to fix that to make sure?
Right now, the, we went online, the status is inactive. There are several dropdown boxes and the status is inactive because we don't have any students on the roads in that building. So we had to use inactive. It's not closed, it's strictly inactive at this point in time.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board?
Yes, Mrs. Batka. Mr. DeAndrea, we had discussed earlier, several meetings ago, about the capital reserve account. Have you gotten any direction from the auditors and from the attorneys about the?
Strictly through the auditors and we've been back and forth and we gained clarification from the state department, which after they read the regs, they said yes, then they said no, then they said yes, and then they said, I need further investigation. So at this point in time, it, there is not, I can tell you my personal feeling from reading it is that when you look at anything to do with budgets, in order to dedicate money, you have to have voter approval and then subsequent board approval to spend those monies. And I think that's the greatest, the area that we have the auditors and the state of now having. When you read the statute, it's not directly indicating that, but I, I would feel safe to say that if we don't have voter approval and board, and to spend that capital money, that we, we should stay on the conservative side and wait until there's an approval and a board approval before going ahead and taking money out of capital reserve and trying to use it at this point in time. But the auditors are trying to get that clarification and they, he did send me an email, I believe it was Friday, indicating that he did speak to someone and that they even agreed that they, they need to do further investigation because the statutes are not clear on that specific question.
Well, the reason I ask is because we need a definite answer before February so that I can go.
I understand that, but if the auditors can't give me the answer, they're the ones that are going to say yes or no and qualify or unqualify your audit report. And if I don't have their blessings, I'm going to say at this point in time, no, you don't spend that money because they're, they're the ones that are going to qualify or unqualify your audit based on their feelings. So it might, it's best to get them to say yes because the last thing you want is a qualified opinion on your audit that you did something totally outside the realms of the statute.
The ambiguous regulations you're talking about, is it state regulation?
Yes.
States cannot interpret the state regulation.
It's the email I had, then yes and no, and then he said, you know what, let me That's the email I had, and yes and no, and then he said, you know what, let me look further into it.
Except Texas.
It's a slime bottle.
I have to tell you, I've read them also, and it's a back and forth, it really is, so you have to be careful. And the thing is, you're dealing with capital reserve, where it specifically states, in order to use the money, you need board approval, voter approval with an adopted budget. Then you read the next subsection, it talks about ways to use it, and it's vague as to if you have the authority to just use it. So that's where the ambiguity is coming in.
And it has to be the auditor who does this, like a lawyer?
No, again, your lawyer can tell you whatever they want, the auditors come in and say, who gave you that opinion? That's a wrong opinion, so I'm gonna go to the auditors, because they're the ones having to say yes or no to the spending of money at the end result.
Okay, one other thing we did discuss at the finance committee meeting, and just to get direction, it probably was the intent of, I guess at the meeting, that we would come back to the board with a 2% budget? Is that what the board's looking for, since the cap is 2%, is that what the board's looking for from the finance committee? Do they want something lower, they want to come in higher? Does anybody have a preference, or?
I don't think it should be 1%, 2%.
You can't go back more than 2% because the state law doesn't allow it.
Well, we could come to the board with more than 2%, and they could cut it, it's just a matter of direction, do you want the pre-cut?
No, I think you put in the budget what we think we need to have in the budget, and then we sit there and we say what we gotta do.
Okay, so I guess the attendees will aim for 2% to bring to the board, does that? Anybody have a problem? Okay, and then we'll go from there. Anything else for discussion? If not, I'll open it up to the public for any questions about any topic. Barbara Kil- whatever, Barbara Kil-. Gil Cummins, 22 Schmidt Street. This is ironic, I went to the council meeting yesterday, and chastising the council for spending money needlessly and bonding money. Now, I'm at the opposite with this board. I know it's budget time, and what I'm looking for is to spend money on facilities. And when you come up with your budget, to look to repair the roofs, and possibly even windows. Because if you don't, it's just like a house, you have, it just escalates, and you have more problems. And then it's gonna turn around, and you're gonna come back to the public for a referendum or so, and it's gonna be more costly. It, I can't get over that we can't fix the field. When I look in town, you have a Little League field, and you have a Babe Ruth field right behind the rural hall. Beautiful fields. In this high school, no matter what you do here, I've been coming to meetings for how many years, and it seems everything gets put on the back burner. We can't do this because of this, we can't do this because of that. And it seems like nothing gets done, especially in facilities. And I think that's very, very important. Today, there was an editorial in the newspaper about how important it is to fix the schools. That is just important as learning, to give a child a safe environment. If you have a leaky roof, eventually it's gonna go into the walls, you're gonna end up with a mold problem, and that's really gonna be a major problem. But here, it just goes on and on. So whoever on your finance committee, who's ever doing the budget, preparing the budget, I hope you put paper for the teachers, and not expect the teacher to buy their own paper. And also, to fix the roofs and fix the buildings, maintain them, it's an investment. Me as a taxpayer, that's my investment here. Another subject I sat and listened to was this cafeteria problem. Three years ago, at least, I sat and listened to the auditor, and we were between $80,000 and $90,000 in the red. And we operated for several years in the red. So the money had to come from somewhere, so it came probably from not fixing the roof or not buying paper for the cafeteria. I couldn't get over it. Now, it's operating fine, you have money, and want to spend it all, like you said, it's self-sustaining. But what happened to the money that we lost those several years, do they pay it back to us?
There was only one year we lost, and they made it up in 2010, 11 year.
They made it up for themselves for 2011. Several years ago, Tony Vatsky retired, and I remember Carla Southern telling me that it was the state law required that you had to have, she was a manager, whatever. She was replaced with three people. Has our population exploded that you have to have so many? That you're hiring substitutes for to manage, I know the cafeteria expanded here, but it just seems to be more people, I mean, the menu hasn't improved, but it seems to be something's wrong with this cafeteria we're doing.
The answer is yes, because we were now required to provide a breakfast program, so yes, the program has increased.
There's something wrong either with management, or whatever, but there definitely seems to be a problem with cafeteria that keeps coming up for how many years. Another thing, years ago, when you had a, like a principal out, and this was in the high school, this was in the middle school, a manager stepped up, a vice principal stepped up to replace them. Now, I spoke to former principals and all, and they always had the vice principal or whomever fill in. And they have, you have department heads all over the place. Yet, when someone's out, you have to go to get a substitute, an outsider, and pay additional cost. And what is it, $500 a day?
I'm not sure.
$230.
What is it?
How much, $230? $230 a day?
And it's not always done, it's done maybe 50% of the time.
Oh, it's not done all the time?
No. It's done 50% of the time, I know Mr. Gentile covered for two principals, I believe it was, last Monday and Tuesday. And sometimes we just, you have too many people out, you know, people get sick.
But they had Mr. Skoronsky come in, I mean, nothing against that, but for-
Yeah, Mr. Skoronsky comes in for $230 a day. We have certain mathematics and science substitutes for teachers getting 200. So there's not 500, it's not close to that, it's $230.
Well, if it's short-term.
It's short-term.
I think you should use someone who would then-
We try to, if we can. We try to, we use about 50% of the time, I would say. In the big buildings, in the big buildings, we don't. You're talking, the SUE, it's really predominantly done in the elementary schools, because it's only one, it's only one person. In the big buildings, we don't replace anybody.
Well, getting back to the budget, who's ever working on it, I hope you do include to maintain and look for a big portion on facilities.
Mrs. Gil Cummins, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I just want to address one thing, I have permission from a lovely president to address one of the concerns. Because I know last week you came up and you lectured us too about the facilities. And I'm sitting here saying, what are you talking about? And let me explain. Since Mr. Pantoliano has been here, and since the good Mr. Rashada has taken leadership of the buildings and grounds, you're looking at the board that has put more into these facilities and done more capital improvements than in recent memory, probably since you can remember, since the days of Joe Bellin and that crowd on the board. Offhand, I don't know, how many millions of dollars, when the stimulus, when it came to $4 million, we put into capital improvements, we replaced-
I can tell you, over the 10 years I've been here, we've probably done about $130 to $140 million in improvements.
Thank you, you're fine, yes.
Improvements is that without reverend?
All the sleep, since I've been on the board. Mrs. Gil Cummins, since I've been on the board. And Mr. Rashada, correct me if I'm wrong, you can speak up anytime, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, because we replace-
Well, Mr. DeAndrea, did that include this $50 million?
Yeah, it goes in the bill.
Okay, we replace unit ventilators in how many schools, we replace walls, we replace all the exterior doors.
I know you did a lot of work on those.
I know, but you keep telling us that we're not-
Well, the only thing that-
Mrs. Gil Cummins, you spoke for about 10 minutes, I interrupted you all, so now I want to respond.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you did, you have a whole bunch of fields and paper and menu and principal replacements and buttons.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just gonna address the Phyllis of the updates, because I want to go home too. But we have made it a point to go through every one of these buildings and repair things. You sit up here, and if you're, you know, the first time, if you're here from the public for a meeting, you would think that this board just neglects things, we let the roof leak on children, we don't provide a safe environment for children.
Well, they do, middle school, I speak to the teachers, they got buckets, they have to put plastic over the computers.
Well-
We spent $1.5 million on-
I know, I know we did. And you also know, because I know you go to council meetings, and I applaud you for giving them a hard time, that every time a budget failed, every time the budget failed in the past, Mrs. Gil Cummins, you know, the first thing that they said was, capital improvement money, cut this out, don't do that, don't do this, and don't do that. And Mr. Rashada's been very vocal about facilities, he's very knowledgeable about facilities, and we've identified those things, and every time we have extra money, and he just asked today about the capital budget reserves. So we've been very, very, you know, proactive, a good word, diligent and doing these things. But you come up here, and you're lecturing us about it, you don't take care of this, you don't take care of that.
No, because you know why, let me just-
That's what you did, it's on tape.
I don't care, I listened to Mr. Seaw, Chau, he said he wanted a three-year study for some type of expenditure, like whatever. Three years, you talked about the sidewalks in front of the middle school, it had to be repaired. Well, we don't know if we repair it then, if we have the money, if we're going to do it, what happens? A teacher falls and breaks an ankle. But here, it needed that, but it went around and around, I sat at this meeting and listened to them, and, oh, I don't know if we could, we have to get an outside, we have to get a safety, we have to get an engineer, we have to look for an architect, for what? For a sidewalk and perps to be replaced?
You and I agree with this, and let me just, one more thing, because I know people-
And then the other, the other point was, I listened, $160,000 was spent on a security system. How great it is to be advanced, so sometimes it's your priorities what's important. The ball field, the security to get into that, or the roof to be repaired, or that sidewalk to be repaired?
And the fields, let me say something about the fields, that hill in the back of that school has caused more problems with drainage. I think it's gonna be beyond our control to do anything about that.
We have problems with the football, and some of the stadium and whatnot.
That's due to that water coming down for that hill, and there's not a lot we can do about the geology there. I mean, a lot of that property may not even be bought properly, that water's there. The issue is, you can't compare that field that has that issue with the Little League field, where there is no, you know, issues, the topography is different and everything, but we're gonna make an effort to do this, and I agree with you on that.
Well, I hope you do.
And I know we can count on your support of next year's budget when we put this in.
Well, you have the 2% cap, so.
And Mrs. Gil Cummins, you go to those council meetings, and you let them have it. As a taxpayer, this-
And leave you alone.
And you're loved, thank you, Adam.
Mrs. Gil Cummins, I-
Mrs. Gil Cummins?
You know, my name's been mentioned about buildings and grounds. We could probably spend $10, $12 million just in one year of improving facilities. But you know, it is, we're limited sometimes to how much we can spend. You know, I'd love to spend not every dollar that we could, but, you know, we're limited. That's why I ask about this 1.2 that we have in the capital reserve account, if we could use it for doing a roof next year that we appropriated $750,000 for at the middle school, which one of the facilities you're talking about. We had the extra 1.2, we could probably do all the root areas that have to be repaired, and continue with univentilators there, we need univentilators in our windows, we need issues with Truman. You know, Wilson's almost completely rebuilt, but there are issues that, you know.
Maybe someone should contact the head of the Department of Education in the state, and not rely on the auditors to find out if we can do that.
Thank you, Matt.
Before I continue with the public portion, Mrs. Gil Cummins reminded you of something. I spoke to Dr. Altman today, I was at the council meeting, and our Truman situation with the playground and the lease, it didn't go over very well last night at the council meeting, it probably had six people, three had concerns. So before we move forward and hire an attorney to do this, I know-
I already have an email from Mr. Betran saying that they're interested in moving forward.
They are, and he's gonna guarantee that, because it was just sort of-
He put it in writing.
He did, because it was-
He responded saying they're interested in moving forward.
It wasn't, I didn't walk away with a warm and fuzzy that it was moving forward, so.
He followed through on what you asked, and he did reconfirm it.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure, okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, wait. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask, when you guys did the surveying of the land, was there anybody from Buildings and Grounds that from the committee?
It was an outside engineer that came in to do it.
Right, that was when you, Dennis and-
Yeah, Dennis, all, land associates, our architects and engineers do that, and they went out and did the survey of it.
Were you there, or?
Was I there? No, I believe they did it on a Thursday that I wasn't here, but no, no. Dennis would have handled it, and we wouldn't have invited any board members, no.
Okay, no, so the Buildings and Grounds Committee doesn't get involved in that at all?
No, not at all.
I believe it was you and J.K., and someone else that came in, someone that-
Ray Sipley with the gentleman that when we met at one time.
Right, was anybody from Buildings and Grounds there at all, from the committee? Like, that would be us?
I don't, not that I recall, no.
Right, would we be invited to anything like that, or?
I personally don't see the need to have the Buildings and Grounds Committee meet when we do these, we have your direction, we're following through on it. I mean, it's your call, I mean-
What do you feel, Tom?
I wasn't invited.
Would you have liked to have gone? I mean, I don't know if it was like an invitation thing.
We got direction, we did what you asked, we went out, we met with the guy, we, I mean, if you want me to invite the committee to every time I go out and meet with a vendor, I'll be more than happy to invite you guys. I mean, Dennis meets with people four, five times a day.
The ball ground was like, I mean, the ball field was a very heated issue?
Yes, and we're on top of it.
It doesn't seem to be that way, I mean, it seems like it's gonna be solved, it's very-
The board authorized us to work with a professional who has worked on the Somerset Patriots field. He came out, and the first thing he looked, he says, you have elevation issues, don't fix the infield until you look at your outfield. It was his recommendation to go and get the soil sample done, his recommendation to get the survey and the topography, or whatever it's called, done. We followed through on his recommendations, onto what he feels is your first standard to understand what is necessary to fix a field. We had the soil survey come back, and once they came back, he said, now you need to send it to this company to let them determine what kind of mix you can to get to the right plane. So we're following up on the recommendations of someone who's knowledgeable in this, we are knowledgeable in this, so, I mean, we've done every part that we've been told to do, we're moving ahead. And when I have someone tell me who's knowledgeable in this, where I am not, and Dennis's understanding of it, to say, don't move forward with an infield repair until you look and know what's happening in your outfield, I have to rely on that person, if he's once ran the Somerset Patriots-
He's not a medium, I see what you're doing, it's-
Look, I'm not doing anything but following the recommendations of people who know what to do.
It's stalling, what are we stalling about?
What would you like me to do, I don't understand, I'm not out there. Dennis is dealing with them, with this guy Ray Sipley and J.K., I'm not even stalling anything.
Do you want to add one more?
I don't have any recommendations to work on. I built plenty of fields. My expert, I can tell you, if the elevation been shot to the entire field, we do have a problem out there. And if we go ahead and repair the infield, we're throwing our money right out that door.
I didn't say to repair the infield, what I'm saying is, you didn't know that that outfield was that bad before this?
You can't, you can't really-
You have a lot of experience, but you're saying you don't-
No, you can't really determine that until you get an elevation shot.
But you can't see that with your own field?
No.
You build a lot of fields, but you can't see that?
You can't, you can't, you're talking 300 feet, 400 feet, you can't see that, no, you can't.
So it's not being flooded now, or?
No, it's flooded, you can walk out there right now, that right field is completely flooded.
Okay, so we needed somebody that was a specialist to help us, or?
No, no, we knew it was flooded, but we didn't know the severity of it, we didn't know the severity of it. My recommendation to the board is to hire an architect, get a full-blown scale, scope of work, and go out to bid for it, because you are definitely gonna be over your threshold.
What type of timeframe are we in? Can you gently?
I really can't answer that, Phyllis, I really can't, but that's the right way to go with this. Because if you spend a nickel on that infield, according to our expert, our consultant, you're throwing your money right out the door. If you spend $20 on that field, you're throwing it out, on the infield, you're throwing it out the door. Because within two years, or depending how much rain you're getting, that infield will wash right away.
And this consultant, he's not the one to write the specs, or?
He is not qualified to write, he is not qualified, Phyllis is not qualified at all. After we got the elevations, the grid of that field, you can actually see, as Mr. DeAndrea said, between first base and third base. You can't see, you go out there, you can't see, there's about a foot and a half difference between first base and third base.
You see that already, that's what I'm saying, that's already-
I don't know if it's a foot and a half, but the survey tells you it would be a foot and a half, approximately a foot and a half.
Explain, when you talk about survey, you're talking about the issues that you actually can't shoot a tram?
You can't see with the naked eye.
You cannot, you cannot.
Dennis, explain a tram, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, well, what they do is, I made them shot it, shoot the entire field every 10 feet, which is overkill, okay? And it shows you everything, everything. The right field, the center field, first base, the infield, even the dugouts, they have to be- You can take a look at the dugout- have to be, you can take a look at the dugouts, the dugouts are below grade. That all has to be repaired. All has to be repaired. My suggestion? Hire an architect firm with a consultant, because if you go with an architect, they're going to give you out of the can specifications. This field needs TLC. In order to do it right, that's what you have to do.
So are we at that stage now to do this or what are we waiting for then? If that's your recommendation, is that something we should be talking about tonight?
That, that should be on the table. Yes, yes, it should be on the table.
Okay, so we're not actually waiting for anything?
Actually, what I did with Mr., with the consultant, I asked him to put it in writing, his recommendation. He said he'll get it in a couple of days, I haven't heard it yet, I haven't seen it yet.
And his recommendation is going to be...
His recommendation is for us to get an architect and an engineer to go out to bid because we're definitely over our threshold.
So how long does it leave for?
I spoke with him, I actually emailed, we go back and forth emailing, I can show you the emails. I think it was Friday night. Oh, no, Wednesday night, I'm sorry, Wednesday night. Wednesday night was my last conversation with him and I told him, I'll speak to him on Monday, and I called him up on Monday, we had a lengthy conversation and that was his recommendation.
And that's your recommendation?
That's definitely my recommendation.
So we have to go forward with that now? Do you have to, we have to...
That's where you think the next step is right now?
That would be the next step, that would be the next step. If, if, if you want to get this field done, if you want to do just the infield, okay?
Well, you just said we shouldn't do that.
If you just want to do the infield, you could do that, but you'd be throwing your money away. The right way to do this is do the infield with the outfield. Because you definitely have a problem in the outfield. The reason why that infield is the way it is is because of that infield, the outfield.
So the whole field should really just be repaired?
Yes. If, if you want to do it the correct way, if you want to do it the correct way, that's the way to do it.
So we would need to authorize an architect?
I'd like to get these reports from this gentleman so that we can figure out what we move forward with is the exact thing.
Yeah, but, right, and that's fine, but the thing is, we...
And I'll get the proposal, once we have it, we'll go to land associates who have done that, they'll give us your proposed proposal.
Okay. But I guess, right, my concern here is we're not going to see each other for another four weeks and if this is the recommendation that we need an architect to build bid specs, then maybe we need to act on that tonight and say if we need it, we can improve it.
Show that proposed proposal for you to improve, that's...
A proposed proposal from who?
Architect and land associates. And we're, we're assuming right now land associates are the right people to do this.
Okay, so we're going to ask land associates to do a bid spec. Is that what I'm saying?
If the board chooses to use land associates for the architect, for the architect of records, I would suggest that, along with, with Mr., this consultant that we have. Because if we just go with it, if we just go with an architect, an engineering firm, they're going to give us an open and canned spec out there. This Mr. Sipley is very familiar with this field, spent a lot of time on this field and knows what has to be done. In order to get this field right, I highly recommend that we get him on board as our consultant to get this field the way it should be. If we're serious about doing this.
Okay, so my question is, does the board have to act to do anything for you to do that?
Yes, I have this proposal from land associates, assuming land associates will take it on. I mean, we're assuming that land associates is willing, is the right person. When speaking with Mr. Ray Sipley, he may say, I know an engineer that specializes in field renovations or baseball field renovations. And that may be a conversation that Dennis and I need to have with that person that says, what makes you better than land associates? We don't know those answers right now. Those are the things that we're, as we move forward and we get more information, it's becoming an education to us also, that we need to do more than what we thought was just take out play and lay down stuff.
Right, and I understand all that. I guess my question is, I don't want to put this into a position where we could get this answer in two days and we're not going to meet for four weeks.
If I have that, I'll send it. Once I have it, I'll get it to you. I don't know that at this point in time. Because we're not there, we're not at that point, because we're still waiting on this report.
And how long before you get this report?
The report from our consultant, I'm hoping by the end of this year. I asked him on Monday to get me something in writing, what he's recommending. And right now verbally, he recommended to me to get an engineer to go build the specs and to go out to bid. I asked him if he knew someone, he says he did.